Good evening and welcome to the Glendale City Council Meeting of January the 11th, 2022, beginning at 6:00 PM or a little thereafter, 6:13. Happy New Year, everyone. I apologize you will not have a visual of me, it will only be my voice, but I assure you I am present. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of our community, City Council as well as Board and Commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called ScreenWeave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. And so with that, I will ask for your call.
Councilmember Aga Janian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. Thank you. What's next, please?
Next will be the flag salute.
Thank you. Mr. Demille, would you please lead our flag salute?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Please stand for today's flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
Which stands.
To the republic which stands.
Under God.
And without.
With liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, as another year begins, we pray that you bless our community, council, and mayor with health, happiness, and prosperity. Give us the wisdom to make the best choices. Help our council determine effective strategies that can enable them to move forward as a team in a meaningful way. Help our council generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Finally, we pray for all this and peace tonight and always. Amen.
Thank you. What's next, please?
The agenda for the January 11th, 2022 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on January 4th, 2022 on the Bolton Board Outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next?
Next would be presentations and appointments. 3A would be agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, January 18th, 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Tucktalian?
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of the City Council. Next week, we'll have just a council meeting in the evening. Four items under consent. The first will be a report from Public Works regarding a contract award for elevator renovations at various facilities. That'll be followed by a report from the Fire Department asking for a one-year extension with Dr. Angelica Loza Gomez. And then we'll follow that with a report from the City Attorney's Office regarding a contract award for a new insurance broker for the city. And the final consent item will be a contract amendment request with Periton, which is the company that we work for. They were the former Northrop Grumman company we work with. Under action items, at 8A will be a report from Fire Department regarding asking to standardize some specialized equipment related to our self-contained breathing apparatus. At 8B will be a report from Glendale Water and Power regarding Phase 3 of mandatory water conservation and the applicable drought charge, as well as an update on GWP's water conservation programs. 8C will have a report from the City Attorney asking for approval of the First Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Contract to provide a 5% salary adjustment. At 8D will be a report from the City Clerk's Office regarding the city's long-awaited record management program and record retention schedule. At 8E would be a report from Public Works. It'll be a follow-up regarding further recommendations on the community forest. 8F would be a report from the City Attorney asking to receive and file certification of signatures on a petition received and verified for a referendum of part of ordinance number 5974 authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Glendale and Vista Investments, but not a part of the ordinance that supersedes urgency ordinance number 5968. Finally, under hearings, Community Development will provide a report on the extension of interim urgency ordinance regarding SB 9, which had to do with housing development and lot split projects, as well as Senate Bill 478, which is related to floor area ratio standards. That concludes next week's preview.
Thank you. Thank you. What's next, please?
Mayor Devine?
Yes?
Yeah, under board, under appointments, I have an appointment for the Design Review Board I'd like to put up.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Councilmember Brotman, please.
I would like to appoint Danielle Lockeriff to the Design Review Board. Just a couple things about her. She studied architecture at Cal Poly Pomona and graduated in 2000. And since then, she's been working at a number of design firms, most recently, an architecture firm called Office 42, where she spent the last nine years. And she's worked on a wide range of projects with nonprofits, multifamily, commercial, lots of single-family, also museum project, several educational institutions, and even worked on the design of a government plaza in Bern, Switzerland. And Danielle grew up nearby, not in Glendale, but moved to Glendale in 2000 when she graduated from Cal Poly Pomona. And I think she would be a great addition to the Design Review Board.
Thank you. Very good. Very good. Okay, what's next, please?
B would be Martin Luther King Jr. Day Proclamation.
All right. Thank you very much. As we all know, or should know, next Monday, the 17th is Martin Luther King Day. And I have a commendation which reads the following. Whereas the life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is commemorated for his unconditional dedication to advancing principles of freedom, racial justice, and equality, and whereas in 1955, after Dr. King was involved in a 381-day-long boycott targeting segregation laws within buses, Alabama's segregation laws were overturned to be unconstitutional. And whereas Dr. King's inspiring activism was embedded in his great belief for leading movements that used nonviolent protest tactics and civil disobedience, and whereas Dr. King led a breakthrough civil rights movement that amplified the voices of Americans who entrusted a continual struggle that aims to eradicate all forms of racial violence, and whereas community leaders, educators, parents, students, faith leaders, and community members have come together to form the Coalition for an Anti-Racist Glendale, committed to building a more just and equitable city where all residents, employees, and visitors can thrive, and whereas the City of Glendale became the third former sundown town in the country and the first in California to pass a sundown town resolution which acknowledged and apologized for the city's history of racism, and whereas the City of Glendale has formally committed itself to developing a city that is equitable and inclusive for all communities by committing to work against racism and promote an anti-racist Glendale, and whereas Glendale's Second Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Peace Walk will take place on Monday, January 17th, 2022, beginning at the Glendale Civic Auditorium South Parking Lot at 10:00 AM and will conclude at the First Baptist Church of Glendale at noon. And whereas Glendale's peace walk continues, Dr. King's work of justice right here in our city to bring people from all walks of life together to celebrate how far we've come and to rededicate ourselves to the work left to do. And now, therefore, I, Paula Devine, Mayor of the City of Glendale, do hereby proclaim January 17th, 2022, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a citywide remembered day where all residents are encouraged to remember Dr. King's legacy and to continue the work against all forms of injustice. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on this?
No, Mayor Devine. This was our proclamation to the community.
All right. Thank you very much. I want to remind everyone, the march will be held, the peace march will be, walk will be held on Monday, January 17th, beginning at the Glendale Civic Auditorium South Parking Lot at 10:00 AM. Hope to see you all there. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to, before we get to the consent item, I have asked for a report on the, our situation with the COVID-19, the impact on our hospitals, and what our residents can do to safeguard themselves, their families, and their friends. And I know we have, Dr. Wang is here with us today, tonight, and he is the Chief Medical Officer at Glendale Memorial Hospital. So I would like to welcome Dr. Wang to give us the latest report on COVID-19 virus in Glendale.
Thank you, Mayor. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I can.
Wonderful. It's an honor to be with you guys again. I was asked to talk about COVID, where we're at, and what people can do about this. So if you can, if, let me just make sure, Mike, can you see my slide?
Yeah.
You can.
Yeah. So it's two years. This has been two years in the making. We're on our fifth wave, and that is what you can see right here. And in that time, what I want, what I want to make sure everyone takes away from today is three things. I'll go over a little bit more than three things, but there's three things that everyone should take away. We need everyone to up their mask game. We need everyone to vaccinate, and vaccination now includes boosting. It's no longer just the two doses, it's three doses. And if you've gotten J and J, that's getting an additional dose. And then the other thing that we kind of have to get, get used to and start, start thinking about, that COVID is not something that's going to go away in our lives, going back to the exact same way it was before. This is cyclical, and I'm going to show you the data on what that means and that, and then what can we do about this. So what's the same with COVID? So this, this, we're talking about Omicron. This is the data that I'm showing you right here is Glendale Memorial Hospital. You can see that in about October and November, we were, we were doing relatively low numbers of COVID patients hospitalized. So we would see between about five to 10 patients on a daily basis that were admitted into the hospital. And then towards the end of December, you can see the spike of cases. So today, we're at 51 patients in-house. So how is this, so this is similar to what we saw before. Actually, in our fourth wave, which was not that long ago, we only hit about 32, 33 patients in-house. So the number of patients in-house that we're seeing is more than it was on our fourth wave. And this is the same across all of Los Angeles County. So let's talk a little bit about a dose of reality. Omicron, and when, when COVID first came, what the ask from the medical community was that we needed everyone's help to flatten the curve. Back then, the reason we needed to flatten the curve is we had no real treatment. And we had, we knew that there would be a mass number of patients coming in, and we would have a problem of how do we deal with that huge number of patients overwhelming the medical system. Today, we still have that same problem. It's a little bit different. The problem is that staffing is affected by this. So while there is still a large number of patients coming in, at the same time, you have staff that are out, and you can't deal with the number of patients that you have. So while before we had to do makeshift hospital beds and put patients wherever we could find a place, now what's being experienced in LA County is that you have the space, you don't have the staff to take care of them. So Omicron is less virulent than Delta. But we want to remember, we had, we had the original COVID come in first, and that was, that was a problem. It wasn't as transmissible as Delta was. Delta came in, turned out to be a lot more transmissible, and a little bit more virulent, a little bit more problematic for patients. Now we have Omicron that's circulating that's about three to four times more easily spreadable, and it penetrates the protection of the vaccine. So before, we were talking about get vaccinated because, for a number of reasons. First, it will decrease hospitalizations. It will keep you healthier. It will help to make it, if you did get infected, you wouldn't get as sick, you wouldn't need to be in the hospital, and you wouldn't spread it as much as you would. Today, we can't say that. Omicron is probably just as spreadable in those who are vaccinated as those who are not vaccinated. But what it does do, and the, and the original intent and the private purpose of a vaccine is to prevent hospitalizations and prevent deaths, and that it's still doing. Testing has been a problem. Testing has been a problem, not just here in LA County, but across, across the nation. Our, our partners in the, in the testing industry did not ramp up as much as, as we had hoped for. And so that's the problem that lots of our citizens are finding. They can't find the tests. The test, the tests, the at-home tests are available for maybe two hours at a Walgreens or a CVS, and then they're gone. The, the thing to note about this for the, for the public and the viewers, the test is not foolproof. The test that you can take at home, and this is the antigen test that we're talking about, and the way that we've been, the way society's been using that test is, well, we'll go take this test. We'll go take this test before we gather at a party without wearing masks inside. And if everybody tests negative, we're, we're good. That is a misunderstanding of that type of, of that test that we have that's available. The test doesn't really work that way. And that's an important thing for everybody to understand. It picks up that you're COVID positive best if you have symptoms. So if you have a headache, if you have a cough, if you have a sore throat, that's the time to really utilize that test. Because if it's positive, it's positive. It's up to a 90%, 90% correlation with the PCR test, which is the gold test. But if it's negative, it doesn't mean that you're not infectious. So that's an important thing we, everybody needs to understand. We still have another holiday that's coming. I'll just throw it out there. This was on the, on the, on the talks with, with the LA County. February 13 is the Super Bowl. Two weeks up to that point, there's, there's going to be a lot of traffic in LA. There's going to be a lot of parties. There's going to be a lot of people wanting to gather. Using the test, the home tests to, to fool yourself, to think that you're safe, is not a good idea. What everybody needs to continue doing is the same thing that we've learned from, from the first three waves, is, is we need you to wear masks. We need you to be socially distant, preferably outside. If you have to be inside, we'll talk about that in a little bit later, that there's, there's better ways of doing it. The other thing that I, I want to make sure I talk about, LA County has a national shortage of blood. And we saw this during the first two to three waves because people were staying at home, they weren't going out, and they weren't donating. If anyone is available that's, that's, that, you know, that's hearing this, this talk today, we really need people to, to step up, donate blood again because, because there's a lot of people that are in need. All right, so what's different with Omicron? This is data from the UK. And this is why we're a little bit more hopeful than we were before. Because South Africa saw the Omicron wave come here really quickly and then disappear. And that's what's happened in the UK. And we tend to follow the UK's experience. So the UK shows that they had a huge wave upward trend of patients infected. And then within about three weeks' time, starts to drop precipitously. This is the number of cases that have doubled since the January 2021 peak. And you can see our seven-day average is, is increased. While this is increasing, that's the number of people getting tested. The hospitalizations has gone up, but not as much as they did before. And the death rate is, has gone up a little bit. It's not seen as much as in those who are vaccinated. It has, has an increased trend going up on those who are unvaccinated. So that's when you see on the news, when you're seeing, when, when they have said that this is a problem for unvaccinated people. Unvaccinated people are still more likely to be hospitalized, and they have a higher risk of death than those who are vaccinated. So again, the vaccines have done what they were supposed to have done. This are, is the new reported cases. So we had, in the last eight days, LA County had close to a quarter of a million new cases in the last eight days. Yesterday, the number of cases that tested positive was about around 43,000. I think today, they reported about 35,000. That's new cases in our, in our community. The number of positive patients hospitalized, so this is for all of LA County, you can see 3766. That's from today. That's our fifth wave. This was our fourth wave. So we surpassed our fourth wave. But our highest wave, we are not, we're not even close to that yet. But this is cyclical, and these, these peaks all occur around the holidays. So if we can get, so what we're hopeful for, the medical community is hopeful for, is this will be done hopefully in the first week-ish, second week-ish of February for the United States. LA is a little bit different because we do have the, the Super Bowl coming. So there's a lot of angst around what, what are people going to do during the Super Bowl? And is that going to cause a little bit of a spike? But it's, we're, after this, what we can hopefully predict is that this is something that will come during family times of coming out, and people are gathering together. So the CDC has issued new guidance on masks. And basically, anybody walking into a building, because this is so infectious, really should be wearing a KN95 or an N95. That type of filter will do a much better job of trying to protect you than any of the other masks that we have. If a KN95 or an N95 is unavailable, and you're at risk, and you have to go inside a building, then the next best thing is to wear a double mask, two surgical masks. Cloth masks that have been, have been okayed in the past are not good. The reason that the surgical mask is better is because the material that the surgical mask is made from has a charge to it. And it does a better job of, of not allowing Omicron through the fibers. The KN95s and the N95s are better because there's a tighter seal around your nose and mouth, and so viruses can't get around it. But you don't, but certainly, if you're, if you're going to be inside, that would be the best thing to do. And for our citizens that are, that are immunocompromised or older, if you haven't gotten your third dose, you really need to get your third dose, your booster. So what, what we know, what we know today is your first two doses, especially, especially for Omicron, is not protective enough to prevent infection. It's, it does work well in preventing hospitalization. It's better if you get boosted because those who are older, and when I say older, we're talking about over the age of 60 or who have medical problems, need an additional dose to get their immune system revved up enough to help prevent either the infection or to do better if you even get infected, then you won't need as much hospital resources or preventing death. There are outpatient treatments that are, that's different this time from the last. The FDA just recently approved two oral agents that can be taken at home. There is, this is not in a surplus. So this is being doled out by LA County. They're not all over the place. I do know that, that CBS is one of the places that has been working with, with LA County and the state to get it. But there's not a lot of this around. The other thing that's also still available is the monoclonal antibodies. However, that, you have to go into a hospital, get an IV, and get infused with that. But the most common thing, because Omicron is not as virulent as Delta, is that you get the symptoms, and that you stay at home, you take the over-the-counter medicine, and you isolate, and you don't go outside for at least, at least five days, and expose people. There is, just so everyone's on the same page, there are, there is a little bit of a problem with the CDC guidance. The reason they take it back to five days is that they think that 70%, you're not infectious still. But up to 30% of the people can be still infectious after five days. So what does that mean? That means you really, if you're going to, if you're going to go outside after five days, it's called source control. The ask is that you wear an N95 mask or a KN95 mask while you're outside so that you're not spreading the virus further. And I left here, this is the public health information on, from LA County that has all the information on the outpatient treatment if people are trying to get more information. So what to take away, and I'm happy to stop here and ask, answer any questions, is we, we need everybody to, again, up your mask game, especially when you're indoors. It's, that, that has not changed. Eating is the worst time to, and the most vulnerable time to, to get infected from somebody else. Vaccinate. Make sure you get all three doses. If you had J and J, you, after two months, you're eligible for a, for a booster dose. And then we need people to start realizing this is cyclical, as we've seen in the last four waves. This, this comes right after everyone has a mass gathering and tries to get back to some semblance of normal life. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Wang. I'll ask my colleagues if they have questions. I'm sure they do.
I do.
Who would like to go first? Uh, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, Dr. Wang, thanks so much for this update. You answered one of my, one of the questions I had, which is about transmissibility. So you're saying there's no evidence at all that the vaccine has any impact on transmissibility. Is that right?
It's, well, so no. Let me, let me, let me, let me, let me make sure. We had hoped that before Omicron, if you had been vaccinated, it was unlikely for you to transmit the COVID. What is very apparent now is that people who are, who are vaccinated are just as infectious as everyone else. And so that protection, that we had thought that if you're vaccinated, you can't spread it, so it's hard for you to spread, is not true anymore. If you're vaccinated, you can spread it.
Okay. I seem to remember with Delta, I mean, there were people that were spreading it with Delta that were vaccinated. But I thought at the time, we were saying it was less likely. So now, now basically, you're saying it's probably just about the same.
With Omicron, correct.
Omicron, okay. And so then the other question is about, you know, the deaths from, from Omicron. I vaguely remember, I may have this number wrong, but we were saying with, with Delta, I think, if, that if you're unvaccinated, you're something like 14 times more likely to either die or have serious complications. I forget what the, what the statistic was. I'm wondering, like, what is it like with Omicron? Is it, are, are people that are unvaccinated really, is there a much more significant risk of, of hospitalization and death? Or, or is it not as much of a difference as we saw with the earlier variants?
Yeah, so I can't remember, I can't remember the latest statistic that was, that was talked about this afternoon. If I remember correctly, I think it's seven times the amount of hospitalizations. And then the, and then the death was around eight or nine times. But if, let, let me look that up. It was, that was released by the CDC sometime today. And I, I'm happy to, to forward that information on to you. What, what I can tell you for certain is that this is not just like the flu. It's probably worse than the flu for patients who are unvaccinated. That's the latest that we've seen.
Okay. And then the, the last thing I wanted to ask is, you know, a lot of people, and I've been doing this, are meeting people for coffee and, and a meal outside.
Yep.
Is that something, is that something we shouldn't be doing?
No, I, so I think.
Outside. What does being outside really do?
Being outs, being outside and not being right next to somebody and trying to maintain the distance dilutes the amount of vaccine that either of you, I'm sorry, dilutes the amount of the virus that either of you are spreading. Because you're being, you're outside, there's wind blowing, and, and it's, it's much easier. There was data released today that says that, that from the virus outside due to UV light exposure and the way the winds are blowing, that it probably is only alive or transmissible for about 20 to 30 minutes, which is a big difference than what we had thought before. We thought it was in the air, it was in the air for about five or six hours, and it, and it could be, it could be a problem that way. So outs, so outside is still a very good idea as long as you're not right next to, next to the person, and there's enough space between you, that still works.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Najarian.
Yes, thank you, Doctor. So just to, just to recap, the best mask is a KN95 or an N95. If you can't do that, then a double surgical mask. So the single, the single cloth mask is not recommended at, at this point.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's good news because some of us were getting used to those cloth masks, and we need to shift. We need, we need to shift to your, to the recommendation. So I hope we all take heed, and thank you very much for that information, Doctor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kusakian or Agajanian?
Nothing.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not hearing anyone. Am I correct? Okay, thank you, Dr. Wang, for this report. I was interested in the impact on our hospitals. Did you say that, that we are not in dire straits at our hospitals or overcrowded?
We are. So some of them are. So I'll just show you this. This is, I'll talk more about Glendale Memorial. So when this occurred here, we opened up our command center. It was a soft command center opening. Right now, for at least at Glendale Memorial, we have our command center open every single day, and we're constantly monitoring the number of staff members and the shifts that they come in. Is there going to be a problem, or is there not going to be a problem? The facilities that serve as Glendale, Glendale proper are all in the same situation. We're all monitoring the staffing situation. We're all affected by the lack of staff across, across Glendale. And we're doing the best that we can in monitoring that. And we all ask the same thing, is that everyone, please get vaccinated. Please wear your mask inside and, and just, you know, keep doing what we're doing to, to get through this next wave.
Right. What's, what's the saying? Prevention is worth an ounce of cure?
It is. It is.
Yeah.
The, the one, one other thing is that some of the people might, might think, a lot of, so many people have gotten COVID. Everybody knows that somebody has gotten COVID. And we are not in this, it's still better, it's for your health, to not get COVID, even Omicron, even though it seems to be a light, it's not as, as bad as the other ones. It's still always better to not get the disease to be, to, to begin with because we don't know the long-term effects.
Exactly. Right, right. Uh, Mr. Agajanian, did you, Councilmember, did you have a comment to make?
No.
Okay. Then I, I will.
Mayor Devine.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Mayor Devine, it's Councilmember Kusakian. I just want to have a brief.
Go ahead, Councilmember. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, given the recommendations by the doctor and what we're reading in the news the transmittance of this, and some people feeling, having a false sense that we may be done with the worst of this, which obviously is not the case. If we can ensure that, not only at city facilities, but we encourage employers also to pass out masks to employees and to people who may enter a location or facility without a mask. We have any available funds to help those businesses that are unable to do it to do so. But we should start at least with ourselves. Make sure that our employees are wearing masks, the appropriate masks, as well as making sure masks are available for distribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Agajanian, I'll ask you again. I have, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can hear you. Yes, sir.
Okay. I, all the questions have been asked. I thank you for letting me speak. But I will talk to the doctor at a later time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wang, very much for this information. I think the, the bottom line, as we've heard before, is to mask up, wear the proper masks, the, the, what are they called? The medical masks, double up. And please get your boosters and get your vaccinations because if you're not vaccinated, you are more likely to be hospitalized or even to die. So I think it's worth preventing hospitalization and death. Get your vaccine, get your booster, and hopefully, we can slow down or even stop this, this pandemic in our, in our city. Thank you, Dr. Wang, very much. Okay, and what's the next? Okay, and what's the next item, please?
Next item would be consent items, including the minutes to following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Mayor, I'd like to vote for C.
All right. Four C?
Yes.
Okay, not four D? Not four D? Okay, four C it is.
Boulevard Project, so that is.
Vic, Vic? Is that the one? Okay.
Four C is.
Do I have a uh motion for the rest of the consent calendar? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian? Brotman?
Yes.
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. And if you will read uh item four C into the record, please?
Public Works Regarding Appropriate Funds for the Victory Boulevard Project, One, Resolution of Appropriation, the Amount of Five Million Nine Hundred Fifty-One Thousand Five Hundred Eighty Seven Dollars to Provide Adequate Funding for the Victory Boulevard Project.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. What I'd like, I'd like to ask um our Public Works Director to just explain the the scope of the work that is being uh planned for Victory Boulevard and the um the stretch, the geographic location of those improvements.
Good evening, Inc., Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Uh, this is a wonderful project. It's truly a multimodal uh in its truest sense. Uh, the improvements will uh modernize uh an aging infrastructure throughout this corridor. Uh, there'll be additional modes of transportation, uh, and it's it's a regional project that will uh connect us um to uh uh improve our connection between us and Burbank and City of Los Angeles. Uh, the main elements, uh, I'm just gonna cover uh one more item, and then I'll ask uh Sarkis Organistion, who's the principal uh civil engineer and our project manager for this project, to go through the details. But one thing I wanted to emphasize is that uh one of the main elements of this project is safety. Uh, we are looking at uh different elements, pedestrian safety, bicyclist safety. Uh, it has everything that um a true transportation project should have, and with that, I'm gonna ask Sarkis to uh go into detail about the scope.
Thank you, Yaz. Good evening, Mayor Devine and members of City Council. Um, Councilmember uh Najarian. Uh, so the Victory Boulevard Project um is a multimodal complete street project. The city obtained about six million dollars in Mezuram subregional funds uh that you'll be appropriating tonight to complete this project, and it'll provide uh the Arroyo Verdugo region with multimodal connectivity benefits, as I mentioned prior. It's about a one-mile stretch of roadway, and it'll connect an existing Class One bikeway, the Chandler Bikeway in the city of Burbank, to the Class One River Bike Path in the city of Los Angeles. We'll be studying uh the use of Class Two colored bike lanes, uh Class Two protected bike lanes, and a Class Four cycle track, uh in a feasibility study shortly. There'll also be pedestrian connectivity improvements, which will include new ADA compliant curb ramps and sidewalk improvements. Transit stops throughout the corridor will receive upgrades to bus shelters, bus benches, trash receptacles, and ADA landing areas. There'll be curb extensions, high visibility crosswalk installations, and creative crosswalk installations will also be studied. The pavement will be resurfaced, and reflective pavement will be considered in low-traffic areas, such as bike lanes and parking lanes, to further reduce the heat island effect. Bio-retention facilities will be incorporated, as much as practical and feasible. And finally, to wrap up the improvements, uh, safe routes to school improvements will be studied and incorporated at Benjamin Franklin Elementary School, which is located a block away from the project.
So, thank you, uh, thank you, Yazdan and Sarkis. Yeah, this is a really good project. I think the council should be proud that our staff identified this as a potential source of metro funds. The six million dollars is coming from the metro uh subregional funds, and it is a regional project because it does connect, as Sarkis said, the uh, the Chandler Bikeway all the way down to our Riverwalk, and it's gonna upgrade the intersections. Um, of course, as you mentioned, we've got Benjamin Franklin School there down in the uh, the Rancho area. It is going to provide additional transit stops and active transportation. So it's, I think, a very, very good project. I wish we could get this for more of our streets, but the the metro uh criteria do require that it have some regional uh benefit. Um, so it's great. I mean, I know that our residents uh throughout the city are very concerned about pedestrian safety, they're concerned about uh bikeways, they're concerned about children coming and going from school. So this project and the projects that staff has proposed to Metro, which was accepted, uh is great. So kudos to uh Yazdan and Sarkis and City Manager and all of council for uh for giving the green light uh for this project to go forward, and we can't wait for all these improvements to come in and make the Riverside Rancho an even nicer neighborhood than it already is. And if there's nothing else.
Madam Mayor, can I make a uh quick comment?
Yes, Councilmember Brotman, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I, you know, I read the report, and it and there is a lot of great stuff in there. I'm glad you're hitting on so many important things like heat island effect and the bio swells and things like that. Just one thing I want to urge you um is uh when it comes to the bike lanes, um, you know, I've been riding, I actually recently rode twice on the new bike lanes that you put in on Glenwood. Um, and uh, you know, I'm really glad they're there, but I just have to say, as somebody biking down there, they're they're pretty narrow. And if a car opens, if you if you get a passing, uh, a driver opening their door suddenly while you're you're going down and there's a car next to you, you're history. You know, there's just nowhere to go. Um, so um, I just, I just hope that, you know, uh, we can really um look hard at how we can make those protected bike lanes, or if we're not gonna make them protected, at least make them wider. Maybe we can do something with just those uh bollards or pylons, whatever we call it, just to create some level of protection, because it still is, it still is a little nerve-wracking, I have to say, even with those bike lanes going down Glenwood. Um, so that's, you know, that's, that's basically my uh my ask on that. But but it's a great, you know, it's great stuff. I I just love to see all the all the things you're going after there.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion then for this item?
I'll move the item, Madam Mayor, for C.
I'll second.
For the second?
I'll second.
Member Kusakian, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kusakian?
Yes.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, thank you. And what's next, please?
Next would be City Council and staff comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember um Agajanian, go ahead.
I just, uh, as some of you know, the passing of Wahid Saturian, I'm deeply saddened to announce the passing away of our highly respected Wahid Saturian on Thursday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Wahid was born in Iran on March sixth, nineteen forty-six. He was one of the children, uh, three children, and has a brother and a sister. Wahid did his preliminary education in Tehran. He lived in Iran until nineteen eighty-one, and then moved to England in nineteen eighty eighty-one. Wahid died in In, I'm sorry. Wahid lived in England for two years. He moved to United States in nineteen eighty-three. He became a certified public accountant in nineteen eighty-six and continued working as one throughout his life. He was married to Ophelia for twenty-five years, and they have a son together, Christopher. Wahid was very active in the community, being heavily heavily involved in many nonprofit organizations. He was a volunteer accountant for the Armenian Apostolic Church Church for years. Wahid joined Davidian Mariamian Educational Foundation in the year two thousand, a nonprofit organization where I had been involved in since nineteen eighty-four. He became, at a later time, the president of DMEF, uh, Davidian Mariamian Educational Foundation, a non-uh compensated position. This is a picture of two years ago in my house when I invited him and his family. So DM E F, DM E F is a, an organization pro providing after-school education in public schools throughout Southern California. The main purpose of uh DM Educational Foundation was to provide a resource for kids to learn and be supervised after school hours, instead of get getting into uh problems or troubles while uh parents are at work. In the past years, Wahid's wife, Ophelia, was and is still involved in DMEF as director of organization. When I became a Glendale City Council member, I designated Wahid as a commissioner to the Planning Commission, and later a commissioner on the Audit Commission. Wahid was a great professional dedicated to his community. He was honorable, honest, humble, caring, and passionate in all things in the he cared about. Wahid was a great human being and a loyal and trustworthy friend uh who loved and respected by all. On behalf of the city of Glendale, hopefully my council members will join me and the staff, I extend deepest condolences to his wife, Ophelia, his son, Christopher Saturian, and Abdi families, his mother. His mother is still alive, of course. His brother, his sister, and their families, and all those who lived, uh, whose lives were touched by this unique man. He worked and was active in the community until his passing, never having retired in a day and age that many much younger than him retired. Not only will Wahid be deeply missed, his loss will be felt by all of us for a very long time to come. God bless your soul and the rest in peace, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember uh Agajanian. Um, if I may, I just want to say that uh I knew Wahid, his heart was in serving this community. My condolences to his family. Anyone else have a comment?
Madam Mayor, um, I wish to also express my deepest heartfelt condolences to the Saturian family, to Ophelia, their son, and um reiterate a lot of what uh Councilmember Agajanian, who knew him on a deep personal level, uh, said. Wahid, anyone who knew Wahid knew that he was first and foremost committed to this uh, to our community, to our city, and most importantly, to his children. Uh, he gave freely of his time. He volunteered on uh for organizations, uh, the most notable, of course, being the after-school program that Councilmember Agajanian mentioned, the Davidian Mariamian Program, thanks to which thousands, literally thousands of youth, have learned how to read and write in the Armenian language, long before there was a dual immersion program in the public schools. This could not have been done without Wahid's hard work. I cannot uh overstate that. Um, and it will be what I believe, besides being a great person, a kind person, it will be what he is probably going to be remembered for the most in this community. So deep condolences, heartfelt condolences. May the Lord illuminate his soul in heaven.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Number, Councilmember Najarian?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to join my colleagues in expressing condolences to the uh Saturian family. Uh, Wahid was very dedicated uh to the Davidian Mariamian Program, and my my two sons are some of, are just two of those thousands that uh Mr. Kusakian talked about, and they did learn, uh, it it did keep them um in a structured program. They did learn to read and write in Armenian, but not just read and write, to dance and sing and recite poetry, and it affected my life as well because my Armenian was not very good at all until I started helping my kids with the homework from that program. And I I certainly improved my Armenian language skills as well as my Armenian knowledge of uh history and culture. So a great man, and it is so sad uh to see him uh leave us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh-huh, he will be missed. Uh, Councilmember Brotman?
Yes, um.
Did you, I, you have one as well?
Yes, and and let me start by saying um condolences uh as well from me to the um Saturian family. I didn't uh, I didn't uh know this gentleman, uh, but he sounds like he made a huge impact on the community. Um, so uh my condolences to to them as well. Um, sadly, yes, I um, I want to recognize another uh great Glendalean who uh passed away um over the holidays. Um, Robert Richard Alm uh passed away in his sleep uh on December twenty-sixth at the age of ninety-five. Uh, Dr. Alm, or Bob, as his uh friends and family called him, was a lifelong Glendale resident, and you can see his picture there. Uh, he graduated from Hoover High School in nineteen forty-four. And interestingly, while he was at Hoover, while he was a high school student, he was working at Lockheed, where he helped build the famous P thirty-eight Lightning aircraft uh that was uh famously deployed in World War Two. After he graduated from Hoover, Bob enlisted in the US Navy, and he served in World War Two, and he later served in the Korean War, uh where he rose to the rank of lieutenant commander. Uh, Bob met his wife Barbara in nineteen fifty, and the couple had uh twin daughters a few years later. Uh, one of those daughters, Kathy Merman, uh, is living in Glendale today. Um, shortly after that, Bob uh built a house in Adams Hill on what was then a dirt road, uh, it's now Oberlin Drive, um, and he lived there for the rest of his life, uh, married to Barbara for seventy-one years, uh, quite a remarkable achievement. Uh, Bob later went on to receive a PhD in education from USC, and he worked for the Los Angeles Unified School District, first as a teacher, and a counselor, an assistant principal, principal, and eventually he was director of personnel for the entire district. Uh, please take a moment to recognize and remember a true son of Glendale, a member of the greatest generation, and a gentleman who loved Glendale, his city, his country, and his family.
Thank you.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, I I um, I did one other item to follow.
Okay.
Um, I um, I know that there was a lot of concern over the holidays during the rains with the um situation uh at Rock Haven, uh, concerns that water might um be penetrating the roof and and further damaging the buildings. And um I know that staff uh got on the uh, on the issue immediately, and uh there were people out there tarping in the rain, and I was hoping that um Onik Bolanikian could just say a few words about uh how uh how things worked out and uh and what if any uh damage was uh uh was caused by those rains.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of the council. Councilmember?
Councilmember Brotman. Around December twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, Public Works staff went ahead and put plastic covering over two of the roofs, one being the Pines Building and the second Oaks Building. There is no additional damage that was caused by the recent rains. I know Public Works is working on the bid specs as well as working with the historic preservation section of the Community Development Department on submitting the bids and having a contract to come in and fix the roofs. So, I'll answer your question. There is no additional damage.
Okay, and that's good. I just, I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that because I think we all got messages. There was a lot of concern. So, thank you for that, and thank you for the staff that did go out in the pouring rain and make sure that those buildings were protected.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Brotman. Anyone else? Councilmember Kasakian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to state to our members in our community that we also had another member of our community pass away. I will request that we adjourn a future meeting in his memory. I think that we should relegate it to the two worthy individuals that were mentioned today by Councilmember Agajanian and Councilmember Brotman, but Patrick Campbell, whom many know, who has passed far sooner than his time. He passed away as soon as we have some information so we can provide an appropriate bio and share some photos with you. We will do that next week. In addition to that, I also want to ask. There was a couple of, on social media, there was a couple of posts about some of our stops, our bus stops for the B-line with some outdated route information on that. And I've mentioned this a couple of times before about making sure that all our, at least B-line stops, have updated bus route information and times, a schedule, a bus schedule posted for everyone to see, and I have yet to see that happen. I want to again formally request that here. Hopefully, one of my colleagues will second this that we make sure that our bus stops have a clearly visible, legible bus schedule posted at all our bus stops without any further delay. We don't need staff reports on this. This is something that, you know, we can see how, I mean, it's done all over the world, and it's done in many places, and there's really no reason for us to not have it done yet. So, if I can have a second, I'd appreciate it.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor Divine, if I could, Mayor Divine. If I could just.
Oh, yes. Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. If I could just ask Mr. Onik Bolanikian to make a couple of quick announcements for the community's sake, first related to some potential meetings for the creation of a dog park in the city as well as an update on our opening day for the Brand Park tee-ball field.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Divine, members of the council. Two quick announcements. On Wednesday, January nineteenth, next week, we will be having a community meeting, a virtual community meeting, on a dog park. So, we would like the community to come out and tell us where they would like a potential dog park. There are two locations that we're going to look at, one being Talon Coney Park and one being Park Lot Number Eleven. That's a parking lot close to the National Guard Armory and the Elks Lodge. The second item. Trying to fix this. The second item is on January twenty-second, we will be having the grand opening of our newly renovated Brand tee-ball field. A couple of years ago, we had Jewel City Little League reach out to staff asking for a brand-new field. Thanks to council support, city manager's support, we allocated some funds, and we, Parks and Business Staff, went ahead and renovated the field. So, the opening will be on January twenty-second at ten a.m. at Brand Park, and we hope Madam Mayor and council members will be joining us for the. Thank you.
Now, what time was that, Onik?
Ten o'clock.
Mr. Brotman? Ten o'clock. Had gone in.
Yes.
Okay, sounds like fun. Great. Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. I have, by now, all of you have read the paper, and you know that California has new regulations requiring all cities to begin to compost green waste instead of dumping into the landfill. So, I have asked Mr. Imrani if he would give us a quick explanation of exactly what we are doing and what our residents should be doing to explain what this means to them and discuss our plans to educate and, to educate our, an outreach to our residents.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. This is a program that is mandated by passing of the Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three that just went into effect on January first of this year. And we have been preparing for it for a while now. We were, we had the public outreach program, getting the word out. We've worked on different literature and outreach materials, basically for separation. We are working on our collection carts that we're gonna, that are on order to change their colors. And most importantly, one of the elements of these new regulations is that the food waste, instead of being dumped into the, into the trash, and will now be required to be put into the green bin, basically with the yard trimmings. Now, we are in the process of, we have put all the information on our website, and we are working with a regional processor to basically develop an agreement so that they can take these materials and basically process them and separate them and prepare them as, for the composting requirements. This should be, we're doing this in two phases. The first phase we're focusing on right now is the commercial rollout, which is going to be done with our franchisees, and that should be up and running in about one to two months. Again, we're working on the public outreach campaign. And then for our own residents, for our own customers that are with the city service, we have placed the order for these small pails that we're waiting to get. It's a little bit backordered with the supply chain issues that are going on. But once we get these pails, we'll distribute them to everybody. And again, we'll roll out the outreach and public education campaign in earnest, and we're hoping to have the program up and running again within the next three months. So, certainly, we're in the, we want to be ahead of other cities. We put a lot of work into this, but it is coming. And as we get the pieces put together, we will be having workshops on this issue and making sure that our residents are aware of this program.
Great, okay, great, thank you. I think the bottom line, the easiest, the easiest information for our residents is that all kitchen scraps, food scraps, coffee grounds, et cetera, can go now into the, or should go now, into the green yard trimming bin. And we will be distributing pails in the future so we can collect in-house or in the garage and then transfer them to our bin. Thank you, Mr. Imrani, and I look forward to the outreach on these programs. Okay, and what's the next item, please?
Next would be number six, community event announcement, three-minute portion. I do have one caller on the line.
Okay, all right, let's hear it.
Catherine Yurka, you're live, Catherine, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Divine, and members of the City Council and staff. Very happy New Year to you all. I have a PowerPoint that I sent in, and because of the lag, I can't see it. But I'm going to hope it goes up, and I will try to talk through it. Please put the first slide up if it's not up already.
Miss Yurka, it's up.
Thank you. So, I would like to raise a past community event at the Alex Theater that concerns me very much. I know we all care about this theater as one of our city's most iconic buildings and a very special building in California more generally. Late in December, a group called Chocolate Skateboard hosted an event there in the forecourt and the theater. And I can't believe this is the sort of thing that council had in mind when it voted to take the Alex in a different direction. These are among a few dozen images that were published online by Thrasher Magazine with captions. The first caption reads, "Drink some, look at them, or even pour them out. Free beer is free beer." Next slide, please. Now, alcohol has been served at events in the forecourt for many years, and I don't think that's a problem. But this event was really about drinking, about getting drunk, as much as it was about skateboards. And in the second slide, you see them going two-fisted. There are also photographs of people proudly showing their fake IDs and people looking visibly drunk. Next slide, please. Here, people are drinking in the theater. There have been reports of people vomiting in the Alex and vandalizing the men's room. Next slide, please. The caption of this one reads, "Fan favorite Jordan Trahan taking advantage of the VIP smoking section." And this is not the only image of smoking inside the theater. I don't know if he's smoking pot or cigarettes, and I don't care. Where was SAS? Did they not have staff present? If so, why did they not have sufficient staff? Was fan favorite Jordan Trahan kicked out for smoking? It doesn't look like it. Under no circumstances should random guests have been allowed to smoke anything in that theater, and they certainly weren't hiding it. SAS is responsible for the operation of the Alex and ensuring the protection of this historic theater. These photographs, so early in SAS's tenure, are beyond dismaying. They raise serious questions about their stewardship. I understand they want millions in capital improvements from the city, but does evidence suggest they're going to take care of this precious resource? I hope you will do what you can to ensure this never happens again. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Lanzafame or Mr. Calvert, do we have a reply to this? So, we all, we all received this email, this information.
Your, Madam Mayor, I'll ask Bradley to, he'd spoke to SAS about it. I'll ask Bradley to report, and I can add any comments that, permission, Bradley?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. There are a number of, well, first off, I would say there are some elements of these images that are probably pretty alarming. I think what is not being told is the full story of what has been posted there. The event that occurred and some of the activities that also occurred there were not something that were sanctioned by SAS. They were led to believe that a particular event was going to occur. It was to be a film premiere, but there were certain activities that ended up occurring there that they did not anticipate. So, some of the comments regarding the smoking that occurred in the theater, SAS actually had staff members there on site who actively removed them from the facility. They did cut off alcohol service at a certain point in time. IDs were checked, as well as vaccination proof was also checked by SAS. And then ultimately, the incidents of potential vandalism, somebody did tag one of the bathroom men's stall doors with essentially a Sharpie. Because of all the things that have happened here, SAS actually withheld their security deposit to pay for that damage. They are not willing to do business with them again because this event was not as it was advertised to SAS. SAS is very, very much committed to protecting the theater, to ensuring that those kind of rules and regulations remain in place. Obviously, they can't monitor and manage every single individual, but when incidents like these did occur, they did have them removed from the theater. They did have staff members present for that as well. What I would also add is that during this period of time, SAS has gone on to host a number of other very successful events. While some of these images may be, as mentioned, alarming and maybe not representative of what we were hoping to see, what's not being shown are the nearly two sold-out performances with the Los Angeles Ballet Nutcracker, the scheduling of a Los Angeles Chamber Orchestra for the 2022-2023 season. They recently held a very successful 23-annual Three Stooges Festival with Alex Film Society. They're also working on additional promotions with them beyond just that single event, and also a very well-attended concert for the Glendale Youth Orchestra. So, I would caution that the images that were posted, again, are not necessarily representative of the events that are being held there. It was not behavior that was tolerated by SAS. They did take action, and they will continue to take action as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Calvert. I appreciate, I know that a lot of us were concerned about the images that were posted. You also mentioned that, I know everyone was kind of upset about the Gay Men's Chorus canceling this year. Can you tell us anything about their future at the Alex Theater?
Yes, so they have recommitted to hosting their events at the Alex Theater. They were not able to this coming year because the tickets were not able to be put on sale on time. But they have been in active conversations and negotiations with SAS to continue their performances going into next year.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks for that report. Okay, any other callers?
Madam Mayor, no, we don't have any more callers.
Okay, let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item is seven, seven A. Seven is the Dachshund ordinances. Seven A, Community Development Regarding an Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Glendale, California, Mending the City's Zoning Map. That, a new zoning designation entitled "The South Cumberland Heights Historic District Overlay Zone", introduced by Councilmember Brotman on December fourteenth, 2021. Madam Mayor, I do have a caller on this item.
All right, let's hear the caller, please.
Robert Bunatyan. Robert, you're live, go ahead. Robert?
Good evening, council members. Yes.
We have three minutes, go ahead. We can hear you, go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, council members. One of the most visible issues in Glendale, California, is the cost of housing. They all have a typical home value at over one million dollars, with the median income of a family in Glendale between sixty-five and seventy thousand dollars. The average family is priced out. The cost of housing prices are twofold. It is the federal government inducing house prices to increase by keeping mortgage interest rates artificially low and the city of Glendale, that is the five of you, keeping the supply of homes in Glendale artificially low. Or in short rare, artificial, or in short rare of saying this, it is artificially increasing demand by the feds and artificially keeping the supply low by year five. One of the ways that supply is kept low is by historical districts. It does this in two ways. Studies have shown that historical districts tend to increase the price of homes by five to ten percent, and by zoning the areas as historical, you restrict any more supply in the area. In 2012, when Rosemont was named as a historical district, then Councilmember Laura Freeman stated that historical districts may increase prices. So, the council full well knows what you all are doing, and in this case, it is artificially increasing price. Historical districting is essentially a form of redlining. What you are doing is taking neighborhoods that houses wealthy residents in Glendale and making them wealthier by government eating at the expense of everyone else. It is a way of residents in these areas to protect themselves from the less affluent. It is a bit ironic that the residents in these areas will talk, always talk about inequality. Their actions here will do nothing but artificially increase inequality in Glendale by government eating. I ask you a question. Why should the residents in these two proposed districts be treated special by protecting their properties at the expense of everyone else in Glendale? Why not increase the price of properties in South Glendale by five to ten percent? Is it because that the folks living in proposed areas today have more political influence than the folks living in South Glendale? Thank you, I conclude my comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taktalian, I don't know if we need a report on this as we have, the ordinance has been introduced. Mr. Barcia?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, can, so, hearing that. Okay, can, so hearing that, do I have a motion to approve the proposed ordinance?
Yes, I'll, I'll move the ordinance. May I just make one, one quick comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Just in reference to the caller, just so people do understand that historic districts do not prevent the building of ADUs and junior ADUs. So there are still opportunities in historic districts to create additional housing stock. I think that's, that's important. And the other thing is, we do have a historic district in South Glendale actually called Cottage Grove. So it's really, it's not about North or South Glendale. It's really about where, where the remaining stock of historic buildings, structures are. And many of them have been destroyed in South Glendale, unfortunately. So I just, I just wanted to just add those couple of comments, but I will move the item.
And I'll second it.
Second?
I'll second it.
And Councilmember Kasakian seconded it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, next item?
Next item would be seven B, Community Development Regarding an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Glendale, California Mending the City's Zoning Map. That a new zoning designation entitled "The Casa Verdugo Historic District Overlay Zone" introduced by Councilmember Kasakian on December 14, 2021.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember Najarian, don't please, roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, thank you. Next item?
Next item would be oral communication. Next item will be oral communication.
No.
Action items?
We don't have any action items, Madam Mayor.
Pardon?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any action items for tonight.
Okay, so we'll move on to 12, Oral Communication, okay.
Twelve, Oral Communications, discussion. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Madam Mayor, I do have two callers on the line.
Okay, let's hear them, please.
Edwin, you have five minutes. Edwin, go ahead. I do, I do not have your last name, Edwin.
Yeah, I just wanted to just, just, just my first name for privacy reasons.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, Mayor, I'd like to say Happy New Year's to you and Happy New Year's to Bridge and to all the council members. The reason I'm calling is we need to discuss about public safety here in LA County because Glendale is part of LA County. The one thing I would like this council to do for this New Year's is add this to the agenda to the city. We need to talk about recalling and removing District Attorney George Gascon because this DA is acting more like a public defender who is extremely soft on crime instead of acting like a normal public servant prosecuting criminals. What I'd like to discuss is that the city, all across LA County, have seen a spike in crime since George Gascon took office as the new DA in Los Angeles County. We're seeing more smash and grab crimes. We're seeing high rises of shoplifting, and we're seeing a lot of auto-related crimes. The number one issue that I've been hearing a lot is that thieves are crawling underneath the cars and stealing the capital converters to sell for scrap value. And another thing I'd like to also discuss about is that we need to establish a community meeting so that the public can come and listen to, to what you guys have to say. And we need to discuss about how District Attorney George Gascon is endangering the safety of the community. And what we need to do is we need to talk to the community and get people, encourage them, to register to vote so that we can collect as many signatures as we can to recall District Attorney George Gascon. So if you open your web browser right now and you Google "recall George Gascon", you'll find a couple of websites on there that talks about signing the petition. And this is what we need to discuss. And I could also want to reference to you guys is that one of George Gascon's workers, District Attorney Jonathan Hatami, he came forward and he's saying that he can't do his job because George Gascon is preventing him from doing his job, prosecuting crimes that he should be allowed to prosecute. And another thing that really bothers me is that this District Attorney is preventing members of his own D from attending parole hearings of defendants to speak out against prosecuting these defendants. And this is what we need to talk about. Another thing that I'd like to mention is that currently, there's a, there's a bill that's in the legislation right now that reduces the shoplifting value amount from $900 to $400 to be considered a felony, and it's called Assembly Bill 1603. And what I would like this council to do is talk to the assembly lawmaker into reducing that to $200 or $100 for anyone who steals in that amount to be charged with a felony. That's all I have to say, and I'd like to see this council join in support of recalling District Attorney George Gascon this year. Public safety matters, our community matters. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Edwin. I just want to mention that this council has already addressed the DA Gascon and what he's been doing. We had our chief of police come in. Mr. Garcia, did we, I, and please refresh my memory, did we write a letter to voice our opinions to Mr. Gascon, to DA Gascon about his rulings?
Madam Mayor, members of council, if memory serves, we did draft a letter that was sent to the District Attorney raising some concerns with some of the policy choices that he's made and requested follow-up communication. And as you know, also, there's been a request by council for our office to study further the issue of misdemeanor prosecutions by our office.
Okay, so, so we have, to Edwin, we have already done this. We've discussed it. We've sent our letter about his policies. As for the recall and what you're asking us to do, that would be your responsibility as a citizen. That's not council's responsibility to, to go out and work for a recall, as far as I know. Am I correct, Mr. Garcia?
That's certainly the direction that the council gave at the last, at the last meeting.
Yes, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Vahes Sarajyan, you have five minutes, Vahes, go ahead.
Yeah, hello?
Yes, Vahes, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Yeah, all right. My name is Vahes Sarajyan, honorable mayor and council person. I'm continuing my discussion regarding what, what is happening inside the borders of Glendale to make it so unwelcoming to Black Americans. The city of Glendale is 4.6 miles from downtown Los Angeles. The Black population of downtown Los Angeles is 22%. The Black populations of our neighbors Pasadena and Burbank are 9%. Glendale's Black American population is 1.8%. What is happening to cause such a low numbers of Black residents in the fourth-largest city of Los Angeles County? Is, is this just a coincidence? Maybe, maybe it's not. We know the Black Americans were systematically excluded from the city of Glendale in the city's not-so-distant past. You can't live here. You can't be here after 6:00 PM. You have to get out. The exclusion of Black Americans from the city of Glendale was done by the Glendale Police Department, the Glendale City Council, and by its laws. I don't know if you have that picture posted now because I'm not in front of the TV, but I requested that a picture be posted.
It's posted.
Yeah, great. This is a picture taken in 2018 at another guest house in Glendale located at 1944 Montcito Drive. This is what is being Black in Glendale looks like now. Not very different than what it looked like in the sundown town days. The city of Glendale is using the Glendale Police Department, the city council, and its laws to exclude Black Americans even today. You can see in this picture the police hard at work rushing to the aid of a few residents who complained about vulgar rap music and being afraid of their property values going down. Until the city of Glendale takes corrective actions, I will, I will continue to speak on this issue to you and to our state senators and congressmen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Sarojian, Mr. Sarojian? Mr. Sarojian?
Yes. Yes.
Are you a member of the coalition, are you a member of the Coalition for an Anti-Race Glendale?
No, I'm not.
Why don't, why don't you consider joining so that you can, you can express your, your feelings? And, and, you know, there will be people there that will help you maybe to get your ideas and your facts together and maybe help to bring us to a better community.
I will be happy to do that. I will get that information from you.
All right, and I hope, I hope to see you at the peace walk on the 17th.
Right, okay, I will be there. But I will also continue my calls here and bringing it to the public attention, how the city of Glendale is with regards to the race.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other callers?
Mayor, I have one more caller.
Okay, let's hear it.
Joey Leoni, you have five minutes. Joey, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. It's my first time calling in. I'm happy about the bike lane work on Victory. The other speaker was right about bike lanes. If they aren't safe, no one's going to use them. They'll end up just being a waste of money. I realize it's like much, much easier said than done, but safety needs to be number one with this project. Recreation activities are one of the last forms of entertainment outside of our homes. While going to the movies, bars, restaurants are semi-dangerous today, biking, running, going for walks have become some of the few ways to keep our physical and mental health. And these times, which brings me to my point that I wanted to bring up. We need to have better laws regarding landscaping. Landscaping, landscapers are blowing dust and debris all, all times of the day, all days of the week into our neighborhoods. When I go out for walks or runs around my block, I run into dust clouds caused by these leaf blowers too often. Dust and debris not only from the grass they cut, but also from the grime from the road. The landscapers kindly stop blowing the leaf blowers as I pass by, but that doesn't mean that the dust settles in that time. Most landscapers wear N95 masks or at least face cloths to cover their faces if they blow the debris into the air. Why is it okay to blow the particles into the air when they wouldn't breathe them themselves? To make matters worse, at least in Southern Glendale, we're surrounded by three freeways which dirty our air. Another thing, we've had the worst air in Los Angeles County in the last 25 years. The smog, the smog has been the worst. And then, again, COVID prevents us from going out for any kind of other kind of entertainment, leaving us with just recreation as one of the few activities we can still do for physical and mental health. Just two suggestions I have would be, the first, to only allow leaf blowers that actually suck in grass, like a leaf vacuum, instead of blowing it into the air. And then the other would be to have landscaping allowed only, you know, one day a week or something like that. That way, you know, one day a week, everybody that doesn't want to get the debris and everything like that, they can stay indoors, and then the rest of the time, they can go out for their walks and things like that. So in conclusion, I'd just like to walk down my block without covering my face, eyes, and mouth from the debris that's getting blown around by leaf blowers. And I'm kind of new to this whole, the Glendale City Council and everything like that. So if I could get any kind of comment on what my next move should be in order to get, get this on the docket or get some kind of rule in place, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Well, I, I will tell you that we hear you. And my first question to Mr. Tectalian or to Mr. Bolamikian, are there, are there, what is it, what I'm trying to say? Are there mechanisms for sucking in the leaves instead of blowing them out that gardeners could use?
Mayor Devine, members of the city council, there's certain, there are certainly leaf, leaf vacuum-type devices out there, but you don't see them widely used in, in smaller residential settings, much less commercial settings. But that there are devices available. I, I will say that, to maybe respond to the question, this is something that the council has asked us to look at and return at a future date. And I apologize, I don't know what date we have pegged for this particular item to come back, but it is on our council tracker follow-up list.
Okay, that was for battery-operated equipment, wasn't it?
There was one related to banning gas-powered leaf blowers. And I believe that is, that is set to come back sometime in summer of 2022.
Yeah, and, and, you know, maybe we could discuss scheduling gardeners to come certain days of the week. The only problem I see with that is that there are so many houses to cover. I don't know if they could just be in one area for one day and get everything done. So I'm not sure that's a feasible idea, but it's something, you know, you can look into, maybe do a little research on. Okay, then, thank you. Next item?
Madam Mayor, there is one more caller.
Next item?
There's new business.
Mayor Devine, there is one more caller.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Aram Stepanian, you have five minutes, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Aram Stepanian, and I did call last time, and Mr. Amborani made a comment regarding the franchise fees for the collection of trash. He indicated that the, the fees will be used for public works. And I have done some research. These funds essentially are going to go to the general fund. If they're in fact going to be used for public works, then it should go to a restricted fund, not a general fund. So that, I believe, is something that you guys should look into it. Relating to the same topic at hand, I would like, and some of my friends would like to know, the estimated fees that we, will be collected from these franchise fees, including the AB 939 fees, which I understand is subject to a change based on what the city council members will decide. So that's a flexible amount. So these are very essential factors. My question is, if these fees- a flexible amount. So these are very essential factors. My question is, if these fees are essentially being collected, which is quite a bit, uh, how many millions of dollars is it going to be collected? And if so, how is it going to be spent? Why is it not going to a, uh, restricted fund? Why is it going to the general fund? Uh, I think, uh, following some of the policies of City of Los Angeles, which I believe is a failed, uh, policy, uh, you know, it seems as if the city council of Glendale members, they don't seem to have anything that's original, that's unique to Glendale. So I have watched you guys, and you always refer to city council members of the city of Los Angeles that follow the same thing that they do. Uh, I think you should re, reconsider that. The second topic that I'd like to bring to your attention is the fire inspections. This year will be the third year that I will have spent $1,500 for nine seconds for someone to come in and look at a single, uh, sprinkler system, one single, in a trash chute, to see if it's bent or painted. This, uh, the California code, I brought this to your attention again, does not require a license for this. I gave you the code number, and nothing happened. For the past two years, I've been saying the same thing. And, uh, why is it that the fire department has gone far beyond what the code requires? What is going on? Uh, wha, why, why do we have to pay $500, $400, uh, for three seconds of observation? Uh, I've written letters, but it seems as if you guys don't care. All we do is just, whenever I bring something up, you look at the person who's initiated the, uh, ordinance, put in front of you, and you guys really didn't pay that much attention. You didn't do the study the way you should, uh, and you just vote on it because the fire department or any other department, uh, puts it in front of you. You hardly ever ask any specific questions. Maybe you should. Maybe what we should do from now on is get an outside auditor to review these contracts, these ordinances, and see the relevance, the, uh, financial impact, the social impact. I have brought this to your attention in the past, but nothing happens. And I believe that, that is not a, not the right way. You, you guys were essentially elected to serve the people, and, uh, it doesn't seem as if, on these two occasions, certainly you have not. Anyway, I hope, uh, that you guys will ultimately hear me and, uh, do something about these two issues at hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I would, I would ask, um, Chief Lanzas, I, I think he's probably on the line, if you would, um, get back to Mr. Stepanian about the, uh, uh, the fees and, uh, and why these inspections are done and the mandates that you get from Sacramento. I think he would probably appreciate that. Thank you. And, um, are there any other phone calls?
Madam Mayor, I, Madam Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, then?
New business?
New business?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, we have one item of new business. Uh, this is relationship to the, uh, city manager's appointment of Jason Bradford as the Director of Finance and Information Technology. As the council is aware, uh, you adopted an ordinance last month that created the position of Director of Finance and Information Technology, um, and the, uh, city manager, Mr. Glaney, is requesting your approval of his appointment, uh, which will be effective on January 16th. So I'm going to read the motion and then ask that one of the council members make the motion and it be seconded and voted upon. So the motion is that pursuant to the Glen, pursuant to the Glendale City Charter and Government Code Section, uh, 5495, 7.1A5, the Council of the City of Glendale hereby approves the city manager's appointment of Jason Bradford as the Director of Finance and Information Technology effective January 16th, 2022. As required by Article 24, Section 10 of the Charter, the Civil Service Commission shall certify the fact of Mr. Bradford's appointment to the position of Director of Finance and Information Technology. That is the motion, Madam Mayor.
I will move the item.
Do I have a motion?
I move.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Councilmember Najarian, uh, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you. What's next?
Adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Congratulations, Jason.
Move to adjourn.
Yes.
Free of Vahik Saturian.
Thank you.
And Dan? Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We are adjourned at 7:55 PM.